Back row. Like to call the regular meeting of the City of Chattahoochee Hills City Council for March 4th, 2025 to order. Pardon me, let the record show that all council members are present for tonight's meeting. Like to remind anybody who wants to make a public comment tonight to fill out the yellow comment or the white comment card up at the front table. Change the color monthly just to confuse me. Please hand those to the city attorney after you fill them out. If you have a cell phone, please make sure that you've got your ringer turned off. And if you would, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. First item night is approval of the meeting agenda. Anything that we need changed or added, madam clerk? If not, then can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve tonight's meeting agenda?
Make a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
I second it.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Agenda stands approved. Next up is the approval of the regular council meeting minutes of February 4th, 2024. Can I get a motion, please, to approve those minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second it.
Have a motion to second, anybody have any questions or concerns or anything that they would like changed? If not, all those in favor of adopting those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The minutes stand approved. Sorry, we don't have any presentations or reports tonight, so next up are our staff reports and we will start with a financial update from the city manager.
Right. Good evening, mayor, council, staff, citizens of Chattahoochee Hills, good to see you guys. I see the look worse. Hey, guys, I didn't know you guys came in. Good to see you. Financials, talking real quick with you. I usually go by, in your packet, you have the Tyler, our financial software that I do that's online, that details the financials, but I still go the old school route with this large ledger piece of paper because it allows me kind of to look at the overall budget all at one time. So you got both, whatever was more comfortable for you. And I go through and I color code, you know, the revenues and expenditures for me, so I say, okay, how much we collected the year to date, we're sixty-five percent through the fiscal year, we're in ready, we're in fiscal year twenty-six budget, you know, discussions kind of now, not discussions, but staff has been given their directives to start providing their FY two thousand two six expenditures, which starts in July. So they're working on those and they'll get those back to me by the fourteenth of this month. And then we'll get together as council and in manager and finance director and talk over the budget, starting in April with the council members. But I go through and look at the red areas and revenues, like, all right, where are we behind and such? So, you know, there's a couple of areas that you might look, business, occupational tax, we're in the process of collecting that right now. You you heard during the work session that we waived some late fees because of business and occupational taxes, because we're working with with some new software on that. So you see, that's a little bit lower, so that's reason for that. Interest, interest is lower than, you know, we but we budgeted. Interest is not coming in as high as it did last year. That's okay, we'll make adjustments as we need to. The one thing that's still kind of a question that we have is our conservation, we usually get it in one lump sum and it came in in a small amount, we're expecting more amount, but we'll hold off on that. Then we get into our other financial sources that I want to talk to more importantly is I'd like to point out is T-Splus. You see that T-Splus is there's no fund balance and the collections are at hundred seven thousand dollars. We haven't seen T-Splus that low in a while. And the reason why it's that low, because you're driving down this newly paved roadway there, Ricker Road, as well as Hutchison Ferry and Cochrane Mill in Rivertown, because the mayor council just did a three million dollar road project with both T-Splus and capital funds. So that's why we got to build that back up for the next project. Let me get any expenditures, nothing really stands out there. You know, you might look at non-departmental insurance, that, oh, we're, we're already at a hundred percent, well, we've already paid that bill, you know, it doesn't come in monthly, it comes in in usually two payments and we're already paid that bill. And one last thing I want to point out, and I'll just yield to the council for any questions, because I don't want to go into great, you know, detail on this, is this engineering. I've talked to council members come by city hall, I've kind of updated them, that, you know, in the past, we've had an engineer that's worked for the city that, you know, worked for the city kind of intermittently and such, and we now, that engineer was, went to Keckenwood. He had his own business, he's retired, but before he retired, he went to Keckenwood, which is engineering firm. So now we've adopted Keckenwood as our engineering services and, you know, they doing a lot more stuff for us, a lot more things going on. So that, we budgeted as we always budget, as if we had the old engineering, but we got new engineers, so we're going to have to, next year when we budget, we're very cognizant of that, we're going to budget more for engineering services. But still, you look at it, I don't know where you can get engineering services for an amount we pay right now, because you hire an engineer with salary and benefits, you're looking at two hundred thousand dollars on them. So we're, we're still way, way, way below that. So if you see that number down there in expenditures, that's why that's there. But anyway, that's just kind of a thirty thousand foot level, be happy to answer any questions you may have about the financials this month.
Robbie, I just, it's not a question, it's just a comment, the motor vehicle tax stuff, you know, there's that one that's declining and the one that's rising, feels like we've got that backwards on the budget column.
We, and it kind of is.
Six hundred percent, one's at ten percent.
Yeah, and we put, I actually combine them together.
Which makes sense, honestly, yeah. Yeah. Mm-hmm. No.
Yeah, but when you combine them together, you look and it, we're, we're over, we're over projections. I looked at it yesterday as well, I kind of calculated as a percentage.
It's the stuff that looks confusing jumps out at me, right?
Right. And that's what I want you guys to, you know, ask me questions about that, because I don't want you to be confused about anything.
Anybody else have anything on budget? Thanks, Robbie.
Yes, yes, sir.
Next up is a fire department report from Chief Brett.
Good evening, all. The printed report, I made extra copies over here for you. I want to maybe go in the direction of the more lighter side this evening. If you're looking at the top of the report, if you have that, I'll just draw your attention to the photograph there of a recent response we made along with South Fulton for a truck full of hook cheese. Everybody know what hook cheese is?
Do we want to know?
Yeah, well, I mean, it wasn't Gouda, but it was smoked and it was grilled and I'm here to tell you the things that you will see when you work in this business. There are so many fun things, good and bad, and then there are the fun times. But I say all of that, I guess, to say to you that of late, we are, of course, with automatic aid agreements with the City of South Fulton and with Palmetto, we are responding with them as needed currently. You might want to know that the ladder truck that we have is the first view in two of our local cities here and on the south end, because their ladder trucks aren't working. And so, yes, they are relying on us. The pendulum swings both ways, so that you can count on if we're helping them now, one day they're, they're certainly helping us. The Right Sight ad that I put together, sort of the lower right corner there, we've not gone live with that yet, we'll have Fulton County, one of Fulton County's emergency communications IT people here tomorrow to final their iPads that we're using to be able to do that. But I want to tell you how great that training went as actual, you know, interactive training with the Right Sight people, wherever those patient navigators might have been, anywhere in the United States. So we're, we're looking forward to bringing that out in a very meaningful way. And the emphasis, again, if you've missed it, is that for low acuity calls, there's the opportunity, for those who qualify, for you to be able to meet and discuss your physician right there in your home or wherever you may be, that you don't have to depart home or you don't have to take an ambulance ride or go sit in the emergency department for four or five hours in sub-zero temperatures, right? So it doesn't change what we do, we respond to all calls, no matter what, it just means that when we get there, we have this other great opportunity that we can offer you. And so we're looking forward to telling you more about that and we haven't, haven't seen that occur yet. Again, we hope to have that in place one week later than we planned, so by this weekend. Finally, this past, last week, I got the opportunity unexpectedly to meet with sixteen people, I got a phone call from someone who said, I represent a group of concerned people who are caring for a parent or a family member or even a friend, senior, and we'd just like to plug in with you a little bit and know how we can be more prepared for those moments, if you will, and or how to, you know, what can you offer us to help us care for our, our family and friends in their later years? It was an incredible exchange for an hour and a half, and they had so many questions. Again, to emphasize in a similar way, like Right Sight or our chat care, our community paramedicine program, we are trying, we, our fire department, your fire department, EMS, we are trying to find every advantage we can to make it the best service you could hope for here on the far end of the county, right? I was in a commissioner's meeting a week or so ago there to speak to as needed, didn't, didn't, didn't need to, the information that was being given by Grady and the commissioners and the things that the county is focused on doing for the south end of, of this county. And so I'm very, I'm very optimistic that while we are aware that it wasn't too awfully long ago that it took forty-five minutes to an hour for an ambulance to get here. And I want to correct the number for you, if you'll look down the left side of my report there, you'll see incident stats and you'll see a new thing that I've added called EMS perspective. So look at that, that eighteen point fifty-nine minutes average time to scene, that's all calls, okay? So write this number in place, eight point six-six minutes.
Awesome.
That's our average from the minute we receive a dispatch until we're our own scene with the patient. That is point six-six above the national average of what, what you're hoping to do. And we're very proud of that.
And it is so much better than we have ever had here, thank you, Greg.
Any questions that I could answer for you? I don't have any jokes I gave on the, on the joke.
That's okay.
It's Daryl's, Daryl's coming.
Anybody have any questions for Greg? If not, let's go ahead with a report from the police chief, Kevin DeGoo.
Good evening, mayor, council, citizens. You have before you the police department report, just like normal, calls are up, our officers, the best past couple months, months have been focusing a lot of the traffic issues. As you can see, from last year to this year, was four times as many tickets were written last month than this time last year. And a lot of those tickets are, I posted some on our Facebook, we, you know, ninety-two on South Fulton Parkway, seventy on Hutchison Ferry Road, you know, things like that. So these aren't, these aren't just, what dare I say, run-of-the-mill tickets, these are, you know, pretty hefty fines, a lot, a lot of truck tickets on the truck routes, a lot. I'd say probably thirty of those tickets were all truck ticket from driving on our restricted roads, which, as you know, tear up our brand-new roads. And so we have officers that live on them, that live off those roads and they take pride in that, and so they snatch them up as soon as they cross. And most of them, almost all of them are just lazy, they don't want to go down South Fulton Parkway. So, anyway, the, I just want to bring your attention to our criminal investigation. If you notice the number of case closes, I have next to it the number of open cases. It stands at twelve. When I became police chief, we had over thirty open cases. And through the hard work of Detective Carter and Lieutenant Stein, they've been working a lot to get a lot of our cases closed. And so they brought that down from over thirty to twelve. So I want to condemn, commend them for that.
Fantastic, yeah.
Cody's here, yeah, there he is.
Sit down now, Cody. Oh, wait, sorry.
And speaking of Carter, our Citizens Police Academy starts next Monday. He had a meet and greet with them last night, and from everything that I heard, it went great, a lot of questions, which is good. We still have some open seats, so if you have anybody that wants to join, wants to see what we do and learn about the police process, get ahold of Detective Carter. And then lastly, if you were at the, the town hall at Serenby, I had mentioned this and I said I was going to bring this up today, but I wanted to make sure that I, I called Enterprise to make sure I had the correct numbers and the correct information. So if you remember, last year, we assigned an agreement to join, to have Enterprise do our fleet services. And based on the information that we gave them, what we were spending on fuel and maintenance and purchasing of vehicles, where we're at right now, we spent sixteen percent less in fuel, but eighty percent less in maintenance by getting rid of our old cars and replacing them with new ones. What does that mean? Well, that means so far, as of right now, the city has saved sixty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars by going to Enterprise.
Fantastic.
Which is right on track with, we still have five or six cars that we still need to sell and get rid of. And this year, I believe, well, we've already ordered them for next fiscal year, we're right on track to save over eighty thousand dollars this year. So.
Other than that.
Fantastic, good job.
Anybody have any questions for, I'm expecting you to hear heckled Daryl, too.
Yeah.
Any questions for Kevin?
All right.
If not, then drumroll. Next up is a Public Works and Parks Department report from Director Winland.
Get that thing out. Lollipop kid, lolly. Hey, mayor, council, and beautiful residents of Chattahoochee Hills, it's my honor to bring you my report. Give you a few updates on a few things. Rico Road, I've had several people call and ask about the striping and where we at. There, the striping is on Rico Road right now, is temporary striping. They do that for safety reasons until the weather gets right, where they could do permanent. Also, they're in the process of building shoulders, which they're going to be storing, bringing, hauling dirt in and then using our yard, they'll be building shoulders and regras and seeding, that's where we at, where they're processed with it. Hopefully here in the next month or so, we'll be completely done, depending on the weather. Also, I want to talk to the residents and all about Greystone and the project they are doing in our city. I've had a few calls about some dead trees being left on the right of way where they're cutting them down. What it is, is on the edge of their right of way, there's dead trees that are going to fall anyway. So they're following them now to keep them from tearing down power lines and having you out of service. So in real reality, they're dead, they're going to fall. Greystone is just putting them on the ground. So a lot of people are saying, they're not going to come back, get these trees. Well, we talked to them, they said they're shorthanded, but they do plan on coming and getting the trees that are in front of residents and people's house. Now, if it's in nature and woods area, probably not going to give them up now, they're probably going to get in front of the residents, first priority's one. But if, there was a misunderstanding that went through the city, which it never happens on Facebook here, that they're cutting trees and they're not going to do anything. You know, Greystone, we have a great relationship with Greystone. When I got the phone call, I immediately called my representative, he said, no, Daryl. Matter of fact, I got a phone him and the main man, Josh Jones gave me a call, said, Daryl, we're on it, let your residents know that if they need the trees done right now, call me, I'll make it priority. But we are trying to get all these three thousand trees in your city taken down, priority, then step back and then work our way through. But if there's an issue, please let me know. Also, let's see here, I want to talk a little bit about the restrooms in Cochrane Mill Park that we shut down every year for winter. I know I get phone calls, it's sixty degrees Saturday, why is the bathroom closed? But it takes us almost a half a day to drain all the lines in the restroom, we have to take shop backs over there, we suck all the lines out of all the, all the lines in the chase in the restrooms, we have to suck all the water out of the toilets, we put antifreeze in the toilets so they don't shatter. So there, of course, there's no heating and air there, it's just, and it is, it is what it is. But so we don't go over there when we're going to have a sixty-degree weather and spend a whole day doing that process, which costs us money because you have to buy antifreeze. And then you put some of the, we, my staff, we already have a lot of priorities that we have to do now. So we've always done it every year, we close them, when it's, I try to wait as long as I can until it gets cold, then we open them up in March. Usually, we used to open up the week before ball season. This year, ball season has been scheduled early, so we open up a little early. But the mayor and the city manager and I talked, we're going to start getting porta-johns put out there in the wintertime, so at least somebody will have access to restroom. They won't be with, and I'm sure we'll get complaints about porta-johns, and I'm not using a porta-john, but we're doing the best we can, we're trying to at least give you a, a option.
Too.
So just know that we're, we don't go over there every other weekend and turn the water off and turn the water back on and open them and close them, that's just not what we do. And we just can't as, as staff. Ball season starts this Saturday, if anybody's interested, we always have a great turnout ball season, ball, the fields look amazing, I'm proud of our ball, our ball field, took many years to make it look like it is, but water's on. Somebody decided to go over there last weekend and open the bathroom up and just use them. And we asked nobody to use them, but now we had to clean all that up with no water, so anyway, bathroom's open now, so it is part of, that's what happens sometimes.
Daryl, would you speak on Rivertown Road? I know I spoke with you about that, so the residents know what it's at.
Okay, yeah, the, Tom had spoke to me a little bit about it, he asked me a few questions about, I noticed, I'm going to talk about two roads at one time so that we can cover. I know Hutchison Ferry, there's some place in Hutchison Ferry that's been popping up. My opinion is just poor application, that's what I say, from what I've seen. They will be here in the morning to look at it and see if they can fix it, of course. And I want to talk a little bit about the material. This is not, this is not asphalt where we went and done, you know, a ten thousand dollar job, we don't have the money as a city. So what it is, is a seal coat and it's a micro surface that covers about three-quarters of an inch over the top and it preserves the street, it's in pretty good shape to give us more longevity, so when our T-Splus money comes back around, we can do these deep patching process and project like we had to do Rico. So this is another part of the process we started eight years ago, trying to preserve the roads we have with the money we have. A lot of people in Fayetteville are using the same material, went out and looked at it. I was, I was very satisfied with what I seen, but I'm not satisfied with what they did on the process on our roads. I don't know what happened or why, but of course, they said they will fix it and they're, and they're on it, so this, keep in mind, this is not a asphalt project that we could not afford, this was a project to protect our roads that are in decent shape. And so if we didn't do this job, in a year from now, we would be doing that ten thousand dollar job on Hutchison Ferry from one end to the other, because it's a long road. So that's where we're also on Rivertown Road, there's a hump tree that's growing out of the, of the road, we're going to go there and it's on the list, we're going to cut this section of the asphalt up and dig down and see if we can get that root out of the way and backfill it and, and put some coal patch on until the next project that we do, we'll have them come and top that section right there. We're going to try to get that taken care of. Was any, I covered any, anything I didn't cover that y'all need to know about?
Daryl, I just wanted to add, just when you and I were talking about that, too, I mean, the, the reality of Hutchison Ferry and Rivertown, the places that we did that, that top ceiling.
Yes, sir.
Where there are places where the road bed itself is in bad shape, we're going to get potholes, too. I'm glad the vendor's going to come back and maybe repair a couple places, but we're still going to end up getting some potholes.
Yes, sir, especially on Cochrane Mill Road, where I believe it's Woodruff comes out, that's making, before we go into the city, city of South Fulton, you know, if you remembered, it was a bad, it was a bad section of road. And that's going, without spending, you know, that would have cost us about a hundred fifty thousand dollars just for that section. This was a, a way to preserve that, to last us way further down the road, because imagine where we would be if we wouldn't started what all of us as a team started in protecting these roads and trying to preserve them as best we can, where we would be right now as a city, we'd be struggled. We want to turn them into gravel roads. I wish I'd paid everyone of them. Thank you all.
Thanks, Gerald. For those who wonder about the good cheer that happens when people walk up, it's a tight little team here and they like each other and they josh-wish each other sometimes, but you also hear the professionalism when they're talking about their jobs. So don't mistake the occasional humor for lack of professionalism. Next up is a community development report from Director Morton.
Mayor and council, again, you have the building permit numbers in front of you, you can see that we're down compared to last year overall, fourteen total permits versus eighteen a year ago, new homes, only three versus seven a year ago. Inspections and COs also, also down a bit, ten to twenty percent. We, as you know, we have a couple of applications in that are pending, there's an eight thousand acre rezoning to mixed-use hamlet in the DRI process, I know you're all aware of this, I spoke with a representative from the, the team today, they're working on public engagement, something we talked about in the work session, is public engagement, they're working on that plan, they're planning on actually reaching out once the DRI process has matured, so they know what their, what traffic numbers are getting out of that process and they can talk about that with, with more certainty, with more, with more knowledge. We won't have the public hearings on that until this summer sometime, maybe June, maybe July, something, something along those lines. The other one that we have cooking right now is the mixed-use hamlet on Rico Road. We've had some public hearings, we're waiting for a traffic study and had a little layoff in both planning commission and city council. We went ahead and advertised for more public hearings in the March planning commission meeting and the April city council meeting, but learned that the traffic study is certainly not going to be available for the planning commission meeting, unlikely for the city council meeting, so we'll probably be pushing off yet again, but there are advertised public hearings of both those meetings, so that'll, that'll be on both of those agendas. Let's see, oh, and in the last, the last time Serenby was in for rezoning, a couple hundred acres, there was a condition that a traffic study be conducted within four months, which expires here in just, just a few days, and they submitted a traffic study, I put copies in each of your boxes here at the end of the day today. And this traffic study focuses on the land that was the subject of that rezoning, they also are, also are in the DRI process and have a larger process going on, they'll probably come out of that process, also in summer, I'm guessing, probably right around the same schedule as the, as the big eight thousand acre rezoning, I'd say probably within, within a month or so, anyway, one way or another of that, of that process. Finally, we have planning commission meeting coming up a week from Thursday, that's the thirteenth, the meeting's at seven o'clock PM. Up until recently, they've been at six-thirty, we'll be having a work session ahead of it, and the work session will be talking about bylaws, planning commission bylaws haven't been updated for a while and they need, they need some updates. And on that agenda, we'll have the hearing that I mentioned for that Rico hamlet and a proposed concept plan change for a hamlet up in the north end of, of the city, was called El Barso, now Red Clover, I believe. And then also a preliminary plat to be approved for the creative land hamlet, which would be their first preliminary plat. That's all I've got, any questions?
All right, thanks, Mike. Next up is a report from our economic development director, Chris Montesinos.
Good evening, mayor and council and beautiful citizens of Chattahoochee Hills. Let me start with December third, two thousand twenty-three was the day I started to work for this great city, and we are now fifteen months and one day later. And instead of giving you the monthly report and sort of the drip, drip, drip of where we are in current projects, so why don't I go back to a thirty thousand-foot overview of where we've been for the last twelve months? Like, it's really important to look at our accomplishments, accomplishments and their totality. I've provided for you a annual economic development impact assessment, which looks at the financial benefits as well as the, the non-tangible benefits that economic development department has brought to the city. I mean, I can start from the, the back and work my way up. We'll talk about the non-tangible benefits first, those are the things that are non-financial transactional. We look at our two thousand twenty-four ambassador tour series, that's a, a Uh, we look at our uh, twenty twenty-four ambassador tour series. That's a, a tour that we've did. Out of time. It's a tour that we did, uh, we, we started last year. Um, six in total. Where we bring in officials and dignitaries from other cities, other organizations, uh, or other business interests and really show them the best of Chattahoochee Hills. Uh, I've got a lot of interest actually from residents and people on boards here that want to be on the tours. And it's something actually we're starting back up in, uh, in later this month. But very wildly popular. They end up being about four or five hours long, given the, the area that we cover. Uh, but very comprehensive, also developing partnerships and collaborations. Also something very important. When we talk about resourcing and networking and getting ideas and, and uh, exchanging information, uh, we've got a lot of information from our partner organizations on uh, funding opportunities, uh, approaches to different challenges, uh, something that we're always uh, enterprising on. Lily Book, may I recognize her? She's the uh, director of the Chattahoochee Hills Conservancy. I'm very excited to say that the conservancy is uh, taking over the project management for the arts and ag tour uh, program, which we've been discussing about moving forward for the last year. Um, it's a really incredible opportunity to develop an ag plus art event that is seasonal, may perhaps it happens in the spring or the fall. We haven't quite just determined, but it's really a marriage between arts, education, agriculture and uh, bringing in tourism. Uh, there's been shown that there's an exponential benefit to the city of bringing tourists based on uh, the ag process. Also, we talked about the uh, the, the KSU National Science Foundation project we've been working on on the Chattahoochee River. Uh, we just wrapped up uh, seven weeks and that was equivalent to fifty-six uh, work hours in the programmatic element of the project. Uh, the next step of the project now that we're finished with that, as of a few days ago, is that they will have their grant budget certified and we'll start actually deploying the tech in Chattahoochee Hills. Now, just as a reminder, what this tech is, is a new technology that does real time uh, water quality monitoring in the Chattahoochee River, also on Cedar Creek. Um, so they're going to come for a period of twelve months and do real time water quality testing for E. Coli bacterial uh, contamination. So it's a great benefit for the city, for the parks commission, given the great amount of investment that we're putting into Riverlands and Campbellton Parks with the camp and paddle trail. And it's important that we maintain a reputation with the city having safe um, water. That is good for recreational opportunities. Uh, Georgia Economic Placemaking Collaborative, that is a project that we just kicked off yesterday. Had a number of people uh, from the community team on the call. Very exciting. That is a program which lasts for two years. It includes a fall and a uh, spring workshop. The workshop uh, for the spring this year, we in Atlanta coming up in April. And uh, what that program is going to evolve into is take the twenty twenty-one tourism product development report and turn it into a strategic plan that can be used by the city and by the convention visitor bureau for marketing and tourism. We've spent a lot of time this year working on the citywide trail network uh, plan. Uh, whether it was just planning phases or if, if it was articulating the potential routes or um, uh, approaching organizations for uh, funding opportunities. Uh, the, the, I think the really the strongest initiative we've done on this uh, this year is that we've gotten the trails master plans um, integrated in both the safe roads and streets for all, which I'll talk about momentarily, and also into the South Fulton uh, county transportation master plan, which would be rewritten uh, this year as well. Uh, the regional trails program, the RTP, which is the real beautiful universal access trail. We have been approved for final funding for that. Um, it's a matter of being programmed by the Atlanta Regional Commission. For some reason, they switched it from the DNR being the, the uh, transactional organization to the Atlanta Regional Commission. I will know that's because of its federal highway funds that are being uh, you know, moved down to the state level and that's just the way it is. But we have to wait for the Atlanta Regional Commission to amend the tip or the transportation improvement program to actually obviously get those funds and allow us to start moving forward. That is expected to happen in May of this year. Uh, it was pushed back from February. Uh, we're still working with JGDOT. As you know, that's an ongoing saga with the wayfinding signs and speed limit reductions around the, uh, the charter school. I'm very persistent. I stay on them. I emailed them every month saying, what's the latest? What's the latest? And, and actually occasionally I'll get a little blip on the radar with someone saying, let me follow up on that for you. So I'll keep you posted. It's something we certainly are staying on top of and it's a, it's a part-time job in itself. Speaking of part-time jobs, uh, or full-time extras, uh, the Chattahoochee Shields Convention Visitors Bureau, we've been very, very busy this past year. You know, just establishing the DMO, going through the branding exercise. I mean tremendous successes. Uh, currently we're in the process of um, going through bids for uh, website development and multimedia services. And we will be hopefully moving forward with uh, some action on those two agenda items at our meeting on March the twelfth. Still, it's, it's a lot of exciting things going on with that. In fact, Steve and I were talking uh, at the break about how over this past weekend, we had a historic preservation tour where we went to the Beaver's House and to the Scout Hut, to the Verda House. And uh, you know, I, I jokingly just said to Steve when we were with the Scout Hut, Scout Hut, I said, I don't think this is gonna make very good CVB headquarters. And his eyes lit up. He said, yes, but it's going to make a great location for this and that. And I mean, the ban has, has no limits. Going into the geographical information centers and the technology that the city is looking into, whether that's place or AI for um, you know, marketing purposes, whether that's our RGIS Pro for mapping and software development or um, other platforms like community analyst or business analyst, which is an Esri product, which we use to assist in either local projects or grant projects or local businesses with their uh, marketing and business development. Uh, we've got the safe roads and streets for all ramp, which is going to be the citywide transportation and safety action plan to also include the trails master plan, which by having that as an element makes it eligible for funding. That's really kind of the critical thing that our trail system was missing was that you had to have this uh, legislatively bona fide in order to qualify. And so by having in the map and the, and the county master plan makes it eligible for ARC. Having it eligible in the safe roads and streets for all makes it eligible for federal highway. So doing all the background work that has to be done and make these things eligible for funding just had to get done. So looking at each all months, all the small steps that kind of lead up into the big steps to move forward. The last one I want to talk about is the MTAP, where the Mini Technical Assistance Program, uh, Program, which is through the Urban Lane Institute, uh, Atlanta Charter, and that's going to be looking at uh, the Rico Crossroads Community, which is the area we currently sit in. And uh, as Scott actually resides in. And um, so it's important that we looked at, you know, how does Rico fit in from a historical context as a uh, town center or an activity center? And what that looks like. And we've got a great team from the ULI with a bunch of different uh, disciplines, architecture, engineering, planning, uh, housing, et cetera, uh, to assist us in developing a, a future forward plan for Rico. Uh, the last thing I wanted to touch on, which I wanted to kind of one up all my other colleagues about cost to savings. I was asked by a couple of uh, folks in this room about uh, reflecting of the things we've done in economic development over the last twelve months and looking at it from a financial impact assessment. You look at the, the real beautiful, real uh, you know, universal trail we got. We look at the National Science Foundation, the ICOR, which I talked about with KSU. Uh, talked about Jake, Georgia Economic Placemaking Collaborative. Uh, we talked about the ULI MTAP. We talked about the FHA Safe Roads Streets for All. All of those are dollar amounts for the city. Whether that's a grant or a product contribution or a service provision to the city that doesn't cost the city something in return, except for a couple of these have a twenty percent mask batch, but very few. But the net benefit, this is the important part I want to stress through the council, there and to the public is that the Chattahoochee Hills Department of Economic Development has brought in nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars in gross funds to the city just in the last twelve months.
Impressive.
And uh, so I just wanted to uh, kind of point that out and also would like to tell the public if they would like to review this information in detail. The report is available on the city's website under Economic Development Department. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks, Chris. Impressive. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comment, which is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council to provide their input and opinions on any matter not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. We don't have any public hearings tonight, so there's only general comment. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone directly to the council, first stating your name and address for the record. You're allowed three minutes for your personal remarks and I'm sure we have some.
Uh, we do. Mr. Mayor, first is Tiffany Towns.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Tiffany Towns. I live at three, four, six Lowbrook Court. And that is in the subdivision, the estates at Cedar Grove. And I have to say, I want to thank everybody who's been a long-term resident of Chattahoochee Hills because I was attracted to this area for the beauty um, of the city and for uh, the dynamics that you all have created in terms of preserving green space. So with that said, I wanted to just bring a few um, comments uh, tonight as I think about uh, investing in this community long-term because as I said to people about my house, they're gonna have to drag me out with my cold dead hands. Like I planned to be there a long time. Um, so one of the things that I noticed when I first moved here were the keep it rural signs in red, white and blue. And I was trying to understand like what was the signaling there? And I'm like, if this was about conservation, would the signs have been green? Would it have been the rolling hills, you know, and trees logo from Chattahoochee Hills? And I just want to say to all of our community members, for those of us who are new moving into this area, I'd love for our uh, credo to be keep it neighborly, keep it friendly, um, keep it uh, together in terms of a shared vision for what we want Chattahoochee Hills to be. And in that notion, I think uh, the quality of life conversations that I've heard at today's work session and as I've listened to other meetings are top of mind for me. And uh, as I heard, I think it was Mr. Morton referred to our area as the far north part of the city. We are the far, far north part and I want to make sure that as conversations are had about uh, what development looks like, that we think about quality of life for those new residents who are moving into that area. One of the things I think about is, is there a view, a vision for the old Cedar Grove School? Um, that's off of Cedar Grove Road and what could that be to enhance community and quality of life um, in our part uh, of the city? I also think about sidewalks. Um, Cedar Grove Road is getting more traffic and I see more people walking and I think about the safety um, and walkability of our part uh, of the county. I also uh, have thought a lot about recycling services. I moved from Gwinnett County and I was used to having in the small city of Sugar Hill, uh, recycling services uh, at my doorstep. And I think that that is something important as we think about conserving green space. We also want to think about um, more generally the environment. Um, and so these are things that I'm hoping that there's a bigger vision as we get to election season and as we start to talk about what are the priorities. Um, I am learning new language here around hamlets and villages, which is different um, from how things are described in other cities that I've lived in. But I'm certainly interested in how that might look in our part um, of the city where, of course, we have some legacy zoning. I'm in a traditional subdivision. It is not a hamlet. It is not a village, but I would like a grocery store um, that would be close to me. So I want to figure out how do we create a shared vision to do that? And so I will say that for me and my neighbors um, in the estates at Cedar Grove, uh, that we have a lot of conversations in our group chat. We plan to be good contributing community members and we want to be part of the conversation and part of the solution. And so I am just here to say thank you guys for the community that you have created. And uh, I look forward to engaging further on how we can continue to enhance the quality of life. Thank you.
Fantastic. Welcome.
Next, Mitchell Wolf.
Hello, everyone. Uh, Mitchell Wolf, three hundred model lane, Chattahoochee Hills. I was gonna speak about something else, but then after having attended the uh, meeting this morning about earlier today, regarding processes, and then there was a discussion about process. So I had written down some for myself that I wanted to share with you that uh, hopefully you'll implement in with the upcoming uh, moratorium expansion. Uh, improve processes, checklist and review to ensure complete and accurate board packets. Rewrite zoning commission questions to ensure compliance with Google criteria. Expand notice requirements for adjacent neighbors and supervise this process so that developers have substantive communication. Very important. Require meeting notes for every meeting held by a developer with the neighborhood to capture the citizens' concerns. The applicant's responses and open items. Tally those for or against the application. Require expert input on critical matters for any application for a hamlet or a village, including annexations. Have the city, not the developer, take responsibility for special studies and pass on the cost to the applicant. Identify critical objectives of the city's preservation policies. Trees, Chattahoochee, riverkeepers, farmers, et cetera, and require their input on rezoning applications for hamlets and villages. Periodic training on the principles of Euclid, as well as the limits and fifth amendment claims. Revise the cautionary language currently in the standard zoning packet to include the following comment. Quote, "The fifth amendment right to enjoy real property and the Euclid case which vests each municipality with the judgments about what is best for the community coexist but provides final say to the municipality providing the municipality carefully, carefully follows due process." Revise and standardize the formulas for the population concentration table listed in the com plan and add a schedule, schedule for quarterly updates. Requiring the four-step process for assessing proposed changes to zoning ordinance to state the current law, explain the reason for change, state the new law, discuss the anticipated impact to affected parties who allow clarity of purpose for historical perspective. Now, I was pleased to see that the city's financial condition was in such good shape that we might consider an unbudgeted expenditure of about fifteen thousand dollars this late in the fiscal year. The city's financial condition is that it has unrestricted reserves of about six point seven million dollars shown on its latest audited financial report and another six hundred and thirty-eight thousand of restricted reserves. Available cash and cash equivalents exceed seven million dollars. This gives the city more than a full year of reserves, understanding that total annual expenses are listed as six point seven million dollars. A quick survey of surrounding.
Thank you.
If you want the rest of it, I'll put it in, Mitchell. All right. Next, Danine Crawford.
Good evening, everyone. Danine Crawford, five, five, seven, five Cochrane Mill Road. As most of you know, in twenty nineteen, I started speaking at council meetings and planning and zoning meetings. That was because uh, Mr. Don Hayes, our first mayor, approached me to talk to me about a potential development that was going to be developed in our shared driveway. It saddened me, it saddens me that I am still taking, uh, talking to the council six years later about the same issues that we had six years ago, flawed processes. I believe Mayor Reed and Councilman Schmidt are the only two that's still sitting up on stage today that walked with me through that debacle. This council has a unique situation. You can set the rigors, rigorous due process in place to protect our city and the citizens of Chat Hills. You have the opportunity with this moratorium. You have the opportunity with this moratorium to mandate processes such as developers having to supply a certified land survey with their application, which didn't happen in 2019 in my case. Developers having an existing agreement for their own water sewer prior to submitting their applications. Developers include financial reports for investors with their applications. Making sure that this city has the manpower to govern the existing ordinances, such as the tree ordinance, preservation, or IGAs. Making sure that all council members are included in all forms of communication and are supplied with all the information concerning development so that they don't have to conduct their own research. I encourage you to learn from the past mistakes of the former councils. I have been married to a former Marine for almost 35 years, and he has instilled in me and our family the seven Ps. Proper, prior, planning prevents piss-poor performance. Now is the time for this council to extend this moratorium so that you can be the change. Implement rigorous due process to protect the city and the citizens of Chattahoochee Hills. Thank you, Councilman Lightsey, for all your efforts and your research. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, Renee Prince.
Good evening. Renee Prince, 13015 Hamilton Road. Good evening, City Council and Mayor. I'm just here to talk to, just to talk about a few things. First of all, I want to thank Chief Brett's team of guys that came out to my house about a week ago to check on my mom. And they had to transport her to Emery. But the one thing that stood out is my mom said that this one man told her she was pretty. And so she wanted me to make sure that the chief knew that. So I did.
That's your patient care method?
I want to thank Detective Carter for putting on this Citizens Police Academy. I'm excited, first of all, to be able to wear a gun belt, to shoot my gun, to do a ride-along, and to really learn what happens here in Chat Hills. When you, what they have to go through on a daily basis and stuff like that. Coming from, my husband was a police officer, sheriff's officer, and I don't get to hear about that too much anymore. So I miss that. So, but third, Robbie, this is for you. On February the 28th, I'm sending you an email in reference to the Zoom meeting for the 2:30 meeting, for the joint meeting today. And I was told that it was not going to be live, that we would be able to get the Zoom meeting, I guess tomorrow. But it was live. And I understand that it went out on March the 3rd. I had personal things going on, and my family did not know that. I was not expecting it to be live today. And I just wish that you would have just updated the website, and that's all. Thank you.
Next, David Robinson.
Mayor Reed, city council members. My name is David Robinson. I live at 7650 Rico Road, which is part of Rico Lake. I'm here to speak about the Rico Investments LLC application to rezone from rural to hamlet along Rico Road. It's scheduled for your April meeting. At the last council meeting, I spoke on the very same subject I'm speaking on tonight, which is, they had an initial community meeting of which it was well-attended with about 50 people, and there were lots of questions. The representative, the applicant representative, attorney Chris West, was not well-informed about his own project, was not able to answer many questions. And as a result, we don't have much information about the, basically, the nuts and bolts of this project. At the last council meeting, I was seeking, and I'm doing it again today, that possibly Mike Morton would try to set up a meeting with more than Mr. West, who's not well-acquainted with his own project, that he bring the developer, Harrison Merrill, Merrill Jr., as well as the planner, engineer, people that actually know what the project is going to be and meet with the community. There's a lot of interest, I think, throughout the, not just in our neighborhood, but throughout the Chattahoochee community for this particular project. And we would want it to be scheduled before the planning commission meeting so that we'd have the responses that would intelligently tell us what this project is going to be. And I just asked Mr. Morton if he could, I don't know that I can directly address him, but if he would see if he could do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Angela Addison.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I am Angela Addison. I reside at Estates at Cedar Grove, Estates of Cedar Grove, 5451 Two Hills Drive. It's been a minute since some of you all have seen me. We did come to get permitting on our detached garage. I'm so thankful for that approval, and my husband is ecstatic about having that. So I just have a few comments, questions, concerns. As my neighbor pointed out, we really, well, I would just say I agree with her in being attracted to Chattahoochee Hills because of the small-town community feel, access to metro Atlanta without being in metro Atlanta. And that has always appealed to my husband and I. He probably wants to be closer to the city, but I hate traffic, so that's our happy medium. If he wants traffic, can get on the 70 or South Fulton Parkway. My biggest concern is the level of accountability that's placed on the developer. There were several things that we were promised would happen in our neighborhood that have not taken place, including having streetlights after 15 houses have been occupied. Right now, we stand at about 28, 29 occupied. Also, that there will be a walking trail in the neighborhood. We were told about the development of the second phase. We're not getting any, you know, kind of fluid updates on that as far as the development of second phase, you know, what is the permitting process and things of that nature? And just some, you know, other concerns as regards what the developer has said he's going to do and what he's done. I'm not sure how much was permitted or proposed or requested when he started developing Estates at Cedar Grove. But I know that neighbors in Heatherwood, which was also developed by Jeff Lindsay Communities, had similar struggles in getting Jeff Lindsay to follow through with some of the things that he said he was going to do. Additionally, for the price point that we've been, that where we are now, certain things should be, shouldn't be something we would have to request, like the quality of the materials used or, you know, things of that nature. We should, there should be things that we shouldn't have to come back to the table to talk to you about within our year-end warranty. So that concerns me as well. So basically, what is the level of accountability when it comes to developers in this area? And is it a situation where if it's not a prolific developer, you know, and not so much that I, well, I will draw a comparison to, you know, some of your subdivisions versus Serenbee, okay? There are a lot of things that happen in Serenbee, probably because of the thoroughness and just the maybe moral perpetuity or work ethic of that developer. So I can't put that on the city of Chattahoochee Hills. But I think that if there's some accountability and monitoring of what's happening in some of the other neighborhoods, that we can have some consistency. My final thing is just knowing that, you know, Serenbee had a town hall meeting, and I'm guessing they had that town hall meeting with their council member. And never met you, never seen you, any interactions with us, Mr. Schmidt, that concerns me. There's a lot going on in Chattahoochee Hills. I know that Ms. Foster sends out neighborhood blasts and things of that nature. We just want to have that inclusion, but have that inclusion by building relationship with our district representative. Thank you.
That was the last one, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thanks. Thanks all for your thoughts. Next up, let's see, we don't have any public hearings, no unfinished business. So we're on to our new items. 25-010, which is council consideration to amend the position control. Robbie?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Council. Good to see you again. This agenda item, as you know, the manager, city manager, has entrusted with the authority, authority to, you know, hire people for the city. And, but with some restrictions, as you know, hiring people within what's called a position control. It lists out what positions we authorize. You heard earlier from somebody that's been here 15 months and one day. Prior to that, 15 months and one day ago, we did not have an economic development director in position control. And you guys allowed me to create that position under market rate. And then here we are, 15 months, one day later, we got Chris Montesinos bringing in some cash. So you see how that can work out. But I said it to say that, you know, we have several departments in the city. We have a police department. You got 15 police officers in here. You've got a public works department. It's got 10 people. You've got a fire department. It's got 22 people. We got a community development department, which is over, as you can imagine, a lot, pretty much every agenda item that comes before you, and they have two people. They got Mike Morton and a planning tech, and that's it. So what I'm trying to do is to find somebody, we've been trying to find somebody, a city planner to help to back him up. We've been not very lucky trying to find that person. But I did find a person who would come in and be able to step up and be a deputy community development director, which we don't have a position for. And this person could help backfill with Mike and also, you know, be that person when Mike's unavailable. And so I need a position control change to allow me to create the position of deputy community development director as opposed to city planner, which I can hire a city planner right now. I can't hire a deputy community development director. So that's what's before you now. So allows me to officially amend that position control to create that position.
Talked about this a lot. Mike can't keep up the pace that he already works. And as we know, it's hard to keep up with all the things that are happening right now.
Yeah, my first starter here, his hair is black. I don't.
You should have seen how long mine was. No, I know. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt 25-010?
Make a motion to accept 25-010.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion about this one? Other than just to say how necessary it is. All those in favor of adopting 25-010, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is 25-011, which is, yeah. Is that Mike clapping?
It's the greatest day of Mike's life.
25-011, which is council consideration of a resolution declaring some surplus property.
Mayor and Council, 25-011 is a request for your approval to surplus sell a 1999 Kawasaki UTV that was purchased by the city in 2008 as surplus equipment at that time. It has outlived its operating life with us. We'd like to pass it on to someone else. That's what I.
Yeah. In many lives, it's outlived. Remember though, when we were so proud and we could get that used stuff, we could barely afford, and at least we had something. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt 25-001, surplusing that Kawasaki?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Diane, you got? All those in favor of adopting 25-001 or 011, sorry, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Next up is 25-012, which is council consideration of an approval of waiving the late fees on business license renewals, and city finance director will walk us through why.
Thank you. As we discussed in the work session, we have been working with GOV OS to take the business license process online. We've actually been working with them for a little over a year now. Late in the process, we ran into a few issues. So it's delayed the renewal forms for us to be able to send them out. We got an email late today. Hopefully, we'll do final testing tomorrow. That being said, the renewals normally go out January, the first week of January, with a due date of March 31st. But because of the delay in getting them out, we've requested that the council approve extending the deadline for 60 days. And the way the GOV OS system is, we are also requesting that we waive any late fees and penalties and interests for just this year. Like I said, just the way the system's set up, we would have to do that for all or none. So that's the request.
Perfect. Thanks, Dana. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt 25-012, which is council approval of waiving those late fees and extending the license renewal dates?
Make a motion to adopt 25-012.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion about this one? And just seems fair, given the fact that we're behind. All those in favor of adopting 25-012, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is 25-013, which is council consideration to approve a resolution, resolution to donate $15,000 in hotel motel taxes to Bear Creek, to the nature center there. And Councilman, Councilwoman Foster, talk to us about that.
So this resolution is for Bear Creek Nature Center. In 2022, we actually given them some money to also help with the center. But now they have this new improvement. They want to do some education. So we, a couple of months ago, we had asked them to provide us with a letter. So they provided a letter, and I sent that to all the council members, so we have that. So tonight, we want to make sure that we can be able to help them in this process. I know Chip is here. Chip, would you like to say anything about some of the things that you guys are doing?
There's some volume here. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
I think every one of you have been down to the nature center, or at least know of it. Two things I want to stress, our commitment to the community, education of the community, education our kids to. I grew up out here. I knew what a snake looked like, a lizard, a pine cone. Five-year-old boy at the nature center was asking me, picked up a pine cone off the desk, looked at me, said, "Is this an acorn?" He did not know. So that's something we are trying to educate our community about, is nature. Steve, what's the word again? Bao. Balafullic, interaction between humans and nature. And that's something we feel like we are a part of. Right now, the county commissioners have given us a large sum of money. About two years ago, Councilman Foster went up with me, the north end of the county, to the people that give us or give out the grants. And it was mentioned there that they're now focusing on the south end because we're historically underserved. That's true, and they were talking about our kids, but it's not necessarily that either. Chief Brett mentioned our fire protection that has drastically improved. When I grew up here in the 60s, it took an hour to get response time. Eight minutes, is that what you said? Eight minutes. Oh. We're doing the same thing with the Fulton County. They're supporting us. They expect us, expect us to support ourselves too, which is what we're asking you to do, city community. We feel good about what we're doing right now. We're very responsible about any money that's given us. That's why it's taken us long to spend this Fulton County grant money. The director and myself have spent most of the money. But we're being very particular in how we spend it because we feel a responsibility. It's not our money. It's not the center's money. Your money, our money, taxpayer money. That's the way we treat it. Right now, we haven't had any improvements at the center since 1992. Please come down there, look and see what we've done in the last year. We just put carpet in today. Everything had to be cleaned out of the center, so don't come tomorrow. Anyway, appreciate your support. Appreciate it. If the money that you have sent us, please come and see what we've done with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, but your wife darn well wants you to say something else. I can see that. No, but your, your wife darn well wants you to say something else, I can, I can see that.
They're, they're putting the carpet in, so it's going to be closed till Thursday. Come down Friday and Saturday this weekend, good time to see what we've done.
Yeah, they, they say if you want to get people's attention, whisper, right? Can I, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-five dash oh one three?
I make a motion that we adopt item twenty-five dash zero one three.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous, and, and do take a moment to go down there, the expansions they've done are beautiful, and it is a fantastic program for kids that, that, a lot of whom don't get an opportunity to interact with nature, and has been for many years, and, and again, good people running it, so. Uh, next up is twenty-five dash oh one four, which is council consideration to allow the ninety-day moratorium to expire, or whatever we're going to do with it. We talked about this at length at the work session. And, and basically it comes down to this, and, and we, we adopted a moratorium to review our review practices for ordinances. Uh, city, uh, planner sent out some information on what the current standards are. Uh, looking for responses to that, didn't get a whole lot of responses, but also uh, some of the council had asked for some more information, just to inform the conversation, which just came out recently. Uh, so we talked about the fact that people wanted some time maybe to digest that. One of the things I just wanted to say, you know, one of the possible outcomes of that whole conversation is that what we've got currently in place is pretty good. And I would imagine if you compared it to most cities around, it's probably better. But there are always improvements that can be made, and we've already got a list of them that we've been working on, so uh, with that preface, again, I don't want to just call a vote on this one, if people want to have something to say, it's a good time for that, or whatever you guys want to do.
Make a motion to extend the moratorium by ninety days.
For a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion on that?
Like to amend that.
Make a motion to amend if you'd like.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the ninety days to thirty days.
There a second for that?
I mean, I think there's a lot of consideration that goes into this. One thing all of us up here have in common, we all love our city, and we all want to protect it and shrink, we don't want to weaken it. If you're someone who wants to weaken the zoning, you know, you really need to pay attention. The strength in the zoning. That's what we all have in common, we all have in common. And we're all different. We all think different, how to protect it, how to keep it rural means a lot of things to a lot of different people. You know, and the effort to, I'll second that motion, because I think if we've come, if there's not a finish line, we have a tendency to sit back and be lazy. If there's a finish line, yeah, it puts a little more pressure on us. If we need to extend it, Rick, is there anything that would prevent us from extending this another thirty, or even another thirty after that?
No, you can extend it again.
We could extend it if we felt like we needed to. Okay.
All right, so.
Four, I've just, one more comment, one more comment, I mean, four months is a third of the year we will have, and I think that's ample time to get some more ideas out there. We've had ninety days so far. I, I presented one idea that Mike and team have put together. Um, we also had, today had our workshop to talk about the UDC, UDC code amendments. So maybe we'll be able to incorporate that within the next thirty days, or at least discuss how we're going to move forward, if, if not, what we're including. But those types of things, I think, are actually satisfying how this moratorium was written. As far as processes governing the application procedure, reviewing those processes. Specific to the application procedure.
So, Rick, just, uh, Roberts, here, we have a amendment to an ordinance.
Well, and if I, if I could add, though.
Oh, absolutely, yes, no, please.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just, I want to make sure what the process is.
Sure. I, yeah, and I, I don't know the process either, but the, but, uh, we have had uh, nine, ninety days, but, um, but the information that was requested during, for the moratorium period in which we were to receive information, and I, I urge you to look at the work session video and see us going over all of this. But, but my argument was that we have only begun the process because process is about process, and, and so to not see it through as intended feels a little uh, like a failure of process, and the information that we gathered was only delivered earlier today. So we don't even know what's in this information fundamentally. And so given the volunteer nature of our governance here, the idea of taking, you know, what is the hurry? Why is there not, you know, what? And again, to suggest well, we're lazy, so we need, you know, a deadline, a close deadline, to me seems like an insufficient argument to respond to our citizens' uh, desire for, or for an assessment of our processes that gives as much transparency and oh, and this is the most significant thing, I think, allows us to assess whether we are hewing to our own rules as closely as we might. And so, uh, so I can't support a thirty-day moratorium, or, uh, extension, or rather or urges to accept the ninety day.
Now, I'll add this too, Scott, I'm sorry, was somebody else talking?
No. Go ahead.
No, um, I'll add this, you know, the, the processes, it, it, y'all remember when Troy Bettis took, took the seat? Two years he beat up on process, talked about process. Couldn't get it handled, anyway. My, that needs to get handled, okay? My concern is about vested rights and your rights when it comes to your land, okay? Um, that's a conversation that will be scheduled for next month, I'd encourage everybody to be here. I will, my plan, what I offer, which is a darn good, it's definitely worth, uh, listening to. Um, but anyway, that is not a part of this moratorium. My concern is if this moratorium ends, we don't have a discussion about people's rights and what we're going to do with their, their property, or as far as giving them back their rights to their twenty acres. Um, I don't see, I, I would, I just think that's common sense to go ahead and fix that before we release a moratorium. Because that's something we've been trying to talk about for a long time, and we finally, finally got an agreement to at least put it on there next, next month. So it, it seems ludicrous to me to do that, because right now, and, and you know, there's some argument where your people's rights, you know, people have rights or land rights, whatever. Well, you know what, so do the people that have twenty acres, no, they got rights too. But you took them with three votes. But when you talk about, you know, being patient or whatever, I, I mean, me personally, I really don't. Do you, do you have a conversation about giving people back what they paid for, their rights? And there is some legal conversation that happened in the workshop. There are some cases that show that this, this, that there may be a lot of questions around it. This is considering a taking, what this is considered, you're allowed one house per three acres, five, ten, whatever. Higher you go up, a lot of people should be grandfathered in. And if you do the research, like, you know, you know, somebody made a good point, you know, I, I shouldn't have to do as much research as I did. And I got very nervous because I sit in this seat, and based upon the decisions I make, um, if I wind up in the courtroom, I'm going to make sure I made the right decision. So moving forward with this moratorium, till I know for a hundred percent, because the Georgia Supreme Court has never sided with a developer on damages for zoning, not giving him zoning. That has never happened, that is a fact. And I want to make sure, before I take away something that you've already had, that, um, I can legally do that, or do I even want to do that? Everybody knows I don't want to do that. I've been fighting to have this conversation. So, uh, when you talk about, people say, well, this, this, no, that's a pretty heavy conversation. I think as a citizen, if I live in this town, I want to hear the conversation if I own twenty, thirty, forty, fifty acres. I want to know what the council plans on telling me I can and can't do with my property, uh, before you lift a moratorium, because that might dictate whether or not I stay or leave. And some people have stayed and some have left. So, um, that's really my big beef. So, if you want to talk about that zoning, ladies, some of us mentioned that zoning, that great idea. Be here next month, I'll show you how to protect it, how to make money off of it, and how to keep it, and not have to move. That's all I got.
So that, that was not the subject of our moratorium, though.
It was not, but I'm sure the people would like to know where I stand, and that's exactly where it is.
That's fine. So, just when we're talking about process.
I just have a, yeah, I have a, just a comment, so what we're tackling is, and I'm looking at the moratorium language, again, I'm going to go back to, we're trying to provide suggestions that we were asked to do ninety days ago about the process governing the application procedure for rezoning, special use permits, and variances.
And that information came out, that we were within a couple of days of that meeting.
And so I understand there's maybe, we have different ideas, and I know that Councilmember Lightsey had a list of things that he found, that he wanted to find out more about, some historical perspective on things that have been done in the city over the year, last five years. But I still feel like, back to that, we, it was supposed to expire, I feel like thirty days is enough to move the goalpost and see where we're at with providing suggestions specifically for what do we want to change in the application process? And we mentioned a few earlier, I think, who took notes on that, but there was and also the, um, UDC code that we spent this afternoon in the workshop talking about. That would specifically, again, we're allowed to amend the UDC under this moratorium. If we do those things, to me, we're at, we're, we're sticking with the intent of what we've asked citizens to put everything on hold for. So again, I would like to, my motion was to amend the ninety-day extension to thirty days.
So Ruby, if there's anything you'd like to say, I'm offering you the opportunity.
Yes, I would like to say something. Given that we have ninety-two days based on Rick, um, one hundred and day, eighty days that he did not want to go past it, in order to make us accountable, I think we should do thirty days and see where we at. But we have to do the work, as I said before, if we don't do the work and we come back in thirty days, it's nothing, then, you know, we wasted. So, and we don't want to get to the end of that ninety-two days, and we haven't done it, so we have to be accountable. So I want to do thirty accountable, thirty accountable, and thirty. That's, that's, that's my, my thing.
With, with obviously, as we said, the option to renew if we needed to, so again, from a process perspective, if we have a vote to amend it, that's the first thing, right, and we have amendment to what we're voting on, and then we call the vote on the amended item, correct?
Yes, yeah, but, um, actually what happened here, Camille's, uh, amendment, um, I think changed the, the motion as opposed to maybe just supplementing it. So I would feel more comfortable if, uh, the original motion of ninety days voted on first. If it doesn't pass, then you can have a motion for some other length of time or allow it to expire. But I, I would feel more comfortable to let the ninety-day motion be voted on first.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that too, all right.
Well, at the end of the day, we can extend it.
That's right, that's a fact. All right, so.
What I'll do then is I'll just push it. If, if need be.
We, we can always.
I, I couldn't recall, was it Scott or was it you, Richie, who made the original?
It was me, so what I'm saying is if.
If you want to withdraw, if you want, I'm sorry, if you want to withdraw your motion, you may do that, you have the right.
Because we have the ability to extend it every thirty days, if we don't get it.
Right.
Can we supplement the motion? Uh, the sup, I don't know, supplement the supplemented motion?
Well, no, now.
Well, well, Scott, I think now, I mean, procedurally, here we go, right? Uh, Richie's withdrawn his motion.
Okay.
So if we want another motion, let's start anew.
Ask Camille to restate hers as an open motion, and then we can have conversation from there.
Yes, I would like to amend item twenty-five dash oh one four. It's allowing for, it allows for a ninety-day moratorium to expire, I would like to amend that um, for an additional thirty days.
Okay, that'll work.
Okay, and do we have a second for that?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second?
And I think Scott wanted maybe to have.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm asking for discussion, that's right.
So in order to, in order to, uh, you know, with, on this, what looks like an, a general urge for an accelerated, uh, process, can we, can we supplement with a motion to, uh, give it, you know, given that, uh, that we have room for, you know, late fiscal year expenditure, can we get, uh, funding for, uh, for neutral legal advisement on Georgia real estate law in the context of amending our zoning with, is sort of legal facilitation of public engagement around that? Could I say, you know, for, if we, I mean, we just, we're spending funds on just the administrative process of looking at the zoning, which occupied that first meeting today. We could spend the same amount of money on, on the, uh, the, some real estate law specialist in public engagement.
So you would want to amend the motion that we would become contingent upon spending money for different legal advice?
Special, specialist, real estate-based legal advice.
No lawyer can say he's a specialist, so.
Okay, but I think you know.
Right.
This is what our city attorney does for a living.
But, but you can, I mean, you can, if you want to amend it, you can, but then it amends the motion for that to happen.
So moved, I don't.
Okay, we have that motion, is there a second?
What exactly is the motion, again?
He wants to hire independent legal counsel to review this.
Does he go, hire a specialist in, in public engagement facilitation around discussions of zone?
Wait. That's not. Look, we're, we're a representative democracy here, this is not a, a public engagement process, this is an informed, the council, so the council makes informed decisions in favor of their citizens' interests. So if we're hiring an attorney to inform us on the law, to be sure that we've got the law in our heads when we're making decisions, that makes perfect sense. But that's, that's what we're asking for. I mean, I, I think we've got that attorney sitting in the room.
I, I do, but there's not, I'm not under, at all.
I just want to be clear what the ask is. So we're not setting up a public process around this, it's, it's.
Is it taking in or not? Excuse me, is, is, is it taking in or not?
Wait, no, we're talking about processes here, we're not talking about the twenty-acre thing.
Back to Scott's, um, amendment here. I would let you and me have a discussion on that, and then if we need to bring in another attorney, bring that up. Prop council probably has some fund, whatever, that you could hire. Another lawyer, if you wanted to hire about this, it wouldn't have to become part of a motion, I think it'd be something that could be done even by the city manager, he has, um, certain amount of expenditure discretionary ability, so I, I'm afraid that, that your motion is going to, your amendment's going to end up messing up the, the extension.
As long as we have an avenue for the, for discussing.
We, we definitely do. So we have a motion on the floor, clean motion on the floor. Uh, all those in favor of adopting a thirty-day extension of the moratorium, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. That's unanimous. And thank you very much, uh, we have an executive session.
Right.
For some reason, it's not on my, uh, thing, all right.
It is between mayor and council comments first, and then executive session.
All right, um, so let's go ahead and do that, mayor and council comments, somebody remind me where I started last time?
Started me last time.
All right, Ruby.
I remember that. Okay, so hello everyone, um, so glad to see you tonight. I want to say thanks to the staff, all the work that you do. Um, this coming Saturday, we will have a focus group here, uh, from Grady, uh, with the new facility that's going to be coming in twenty twenty-six. Uh, they'll be here to talk and try to get your, uh, opinions on, I don't, I don't know, but if, if, if you available, nine thirty on Saturday, uh, we'll be here, um, to come out and be part of the conversation. And also on March the eleventh, we have Chad Hill's Day at the Capitol. So we will be leaving here at eight AM, um, Tuesday morning, so if you'd like to join us, let us know. Uh, we'll be able to go into, uh, the Capitol with, uh, hoping to the session where they would introduce us from the, a floor. Um, we also, there was going to be some students that's going to be attending with us, so I'm totally excited. So if you would like to join us, let me know. Thanks.
Thanks, Ruby. Richie?
Yeah, guys, um, long day, we've been here since two thirty, crazy days, but we got a lot done today. Not really a lot to tell you, I just pay close attention, you know, um, about what's going on, there's, there's a lot of irons in the fire right now. Uh, but I would be here next month, I'm going to show you something I think you're really going to like. I'll show you how to preserve your land and keep your land, and that you get taxed on your land and you actually pay for it. Um, shouldn't be governed to this extent. Sign up to live in a village or hamlet, that's the rules you sign up for. But, um, we'll discuss more about that, um, anyway, next week. And, and Rick, I would like an answer on that, if you don't mind, when it comes to that, because what I'm reading and what I'm hearing, I'm getting conflicting information, I want to make sure that, uh, I vote I'm not illegally taking away somebody's stuff. I vote I'm not illegally taking away somebody's stuff.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that just kind of made me think, listen, I, I feel like we have one of the best land use plans around, and I realize, no matter what city we live in, no matter what county you're in, some counties don't even really have a plan, Baldwin County maybe, from what I've seen. Um, but it gives you some predictability about what you're going to see, what, what's in your neighborhood, right? So we all, there are, there's, no matter where you live, there's some rules. And I think we're really trying to do the best job to balance that. The councils that came before I had a lot of respect for, I think that was mentioned earlier today. Listen, it is a, it's volunteering, people have done a great job, we can always improve. And when I started, I came in following a great man, and I feel like I, I wasn't here to change what he did. Times change, as we've seen, and we're, we're always in a different place, every year, things are changing. We've added, um, Chris is an economic developer, development. One of the things that we did this last week, we hosted the S, the South Fulton Municipal Association, and big thanks to um, city manager Robbie, and as well as um, the mayor, myself, Rodney, and council member Foster were there, um, and Diane, Diane was there. Um, but we hosted that at the um, Oak Room at the Serenby Inn. And we had a great talk, and it was about the great, Grady um, emergency department that they're putting up over in Union City. So we've known there have been challenges with healthcare, and that's ongoing on the south side, so like, um, Chip was talking about, the investment in the south side, because I learned at that meeting that it was going to cost three hundred and eighty million dollars to open a retrofit, that Wellstar Hospital that was on the south side, and that's why it wasn't done. I didn't realize the cost that would, that was going to create in order to get that done. So they've done what they can in the meantime, Grady has, um, to, to, to open this facility. Um, so I love seeing, like I was talking about earlier, changes happening, things like that are, are great for our community and our citizens. And I'm sure um, Chief Barrett is thrilled about that too. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention, um, Saturday, March twenty-second, is Sweep the Hooch again down here, it's just the fifteenth year they've been doing this. Um, I know the Parks Commission's going to be doing that, so go online, sign up, I think there's six spots left, so they added the Riverlands Park this year, and I just took one spot, so I think there are five left. Um, but it's walking, and you can, it'll be under the Metro Atlanta Walkers and Waiters, and um, we're Metro Atlanta, because we're Fulton County, so I, I had to kind of sift through to figure out, but sign up for that, it's really great, because we get to see, you get to see your own park while you're at it, and kind of cleaning up your own community. So um, I would enjoy that. And then another thing I was going to say about volunteers, sorry to take long, because I know we've been here, but one of my, our, our dear friends in, in Serenby passed away, John Graham, I was, um, he was a district member, and I know the mayor was friends with him, and, and I'm sure the Niggrans and other, other folks. But he was a great volunteer, and one of those that um, I served with on the Serenby Institute Board, um, and I'll tell you, those, that is what I've loved about living here, um, I was really sorry to hear the news, but he had so many contributions to the community, and I just am thankful for that, and that everyone I meet that comes to these meetings are contributing to, so thank you.
It's been a very long day, I, I started my day with my daughter uh, yelling and screaming downstairs, and I ran down and out on the porch, and she's out there pointing with her friend going, look at the, look at the ladder truck, look at the big white ladder on the truck, as it went down my quiet little street that it doesn't usually go down, and so, and, and uh, I think, you know, we all so appreciate the uh, the, the staff and the contributions of everybody uh, working for the city of, uh, in that time of eight-six-six, you, when you mentioned that, I thought I have a scar right there on my arm, I think you guys responded in about four minutes when I blew that one out all over the side of my house, so thank you for that. Um, and I want to say thanks to the staff for the moratorium reporting that's come in. Again, I, I, uh, this, speaking to the notion of our zoning, I think that um, we have, you know, standing on the shoulders of, et cetera, we're here on, with this great zoning, but it behooves us to carry, carry that on, and to make sure, not only by studying the past, that we make sure, kind of audit ourselves and make sure that we are following all of our zoning and understanding it fully, operating in the full understanding of, of what it means and its legal basis in process, but that, um, so, so never in asking for improvement and hewing to, to process properly, is there a critique of our zoning, it's that we have great zoning, so if we want to make it better, keep it, we need to work on, and that's, that's, I think, what that effort is about, and I appreciate this, so many people who have that front and center in mind and have contributed to that. Um, also, just mentioning Sweep the Hooch, one, I used to do that with atomic paddlers in DC, and it's so much fun, it's cool to do that kind of stuff, so uh, and I'll just say, see you in spring.
Rodney?
Hey, one quick question for a comment about Chris, so Sweep the Hoods, River Keepers, we all know we're going to be kayaking in the hooch, and those testing, there's that test result's going to be available to the public, printed out, website, or, you don't have to answer me now, I'm going to keep going. I've never been more proud to live in the city.
I don't know.
And this Tiffany, your comment, you were attracted to the city, you moved to the, you chose to live here, and you want to live here forever? That's me, that's my dad, that's me, I want the undertaker to move me when I move, and um, I'm not going anywhere, I love that, I love that this, and um, if y'all have listened really to the Knights report, it's been great news. The eight minutes and sixty, eight and a half minutes to respond in a bit city this big, and I hope I don't have to call you, but I, it's a great feeling to know when I do. The eight hundred thousand, um, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars to our city, and you've been here fifteen months, those are exciting, the police department, you know, I love seeing you guys that when I'm not speeding, but I love you keeping the, the streets safe. It is, it is comforting, I love living here. I love the keep it neighborly gesture and keep it respectful, look, we all up here, we love our city, we're here by choice, bodies forced to live. We're respectful, that's so important, disagree and be respectful. I'm glad everybody didn't think like me, and I like the variety. The Capitol Day is exciting, that's going to be fun, I was a, Ms. Helen Selman lived over there, um, about three miles away, and they had pages back in the seventies, I was a page at the Capitol way back in the day. The zoning, your, your land value, the thing, that one of our biggest assets, it's not held up in our city by public education, it's held up by zoning, it's held up because of the predictability, if I have acres and, God's my neighbor, with predictability, I know what can and cannot be allowed next to my house, it's so, land use in this city is everything, so please, as you look at our, going forward, be involved, comp plan is huge, please be involved, the zoning's coming up is huge, um, oh, I didn't mention Daryl yet, Daryl, my dad said again, the street, dirt roads have never been smoother than they are today because he remembers when they were so rutted out. I think I've covered, Mike, go get some help soon. And the highlight of the night was a comment from Kevin. Said your officers are patrolling and they take, they take pride in their city. That's, that's the team that I see that Robbie has kind of built here, will take pride in their city, that's everything. Thank, thank you all, and I'm.
Two quick things and one little bit longer thing, uh, Greg, I have talked up here probably fifty times about the work that you've done on EMS, uh, not just in Chattahoochee Hills, but for the whole south side, and that was one of the conversations at the SFMA meeting last month, the, the improvement that we've seen in our times here hasn't just been here, it's been in every city on the south side, they're posting more ambulances down here closer to all of the cities, and that is in great part because of that man's doing. Uh, as the head of the South Fulton Chiefs Association for a couple of years, and just as someone who has taken this process seriously from the very beginning, and has been on Grady from the very beginning, and again, I've, I've said it many times, but I'll say it again, thank you for that ongoing effort, and the proof is in the pudding, here we are with the best response times we've ever had on the south side of the city. Riverlands Park is going to be having its grand opening on April first, um, that has been uh, an ongoing process near and dear to my heart, we worked out a land swap with a couple of landowners to move some land that the city had that was totally inaccessible on the river to a beautiful piece of property that you can absolutely get onto, and we've been working with Trust for Public Land to put in boat ramps and canoe ramps, we now have ramps at both sides of the city, so that you can legitimately get in a canoe and go down the entire river in Chattahoochee Hills. Uh, it's part of the whole Trust for Public Land, Riverlands Trail System, Blue Water System and all of that, but the first active pieces of it are right here, and that's work that's happened in this community that I'm grateful for. Just wanted to make one comment about the zoning too, uh, I was not the first mayor of the city, uh, but when the first mayor was in the city, he asked me to serve as the citizen chair for the first comp plan update process, and I worked with the people that were the, uh, the experts that were running that process, sat in all hundred and fifty-seven community meetings that we had, uh, we broke out into groups that were looking at all sorts of different areas, right? How are we going to handle all the different pieces of the zoning? Uh, and most of the things that undergird our zoning right now came out of that first comprehensive plan process, we looked at the Fulton County overlay that existed here, and took all the parts of it that made sense, and added pieces that made more sense for us. The twenty acre rule was a part of that, right? That was something that came from the community, figuring out what's the smallest lot that looks like farmland, that keeps the rural character that we have here, and the hundreds and hundreds of people that worked on those committees, at the end of the day, when we were done, and we said, okay, this is the output of this process, should we transmit it to the city council, unanimously raised their hands and said, this is what we believe we should be doing here. City council then unanimously voted to transmit that to DCA, unanimously voted to adopt it, and unanimously voted to adopt the zoning that came from it. This is not something that three people have done, this is not something that came out of nowhere, this is something that was done by this community, and I'll say, that was in two thousand and eleven, right? So it was done a while ago, we've had two updates since then, each time have reconfirmed the basic thinking of that, always some tweaks, and to Scott's point, right, you can always make something better, and talking about making it better is always the right thing to do. But this is something that's been through deep community process, and the proof is in the pudding, people move here to be a part of this. You look at this place twenty years after we started these conversations, it's amazing, quality of life here is amazing, for both the people that have lived here since before, and the people that have come here that are new, and that's something that's worth fighting for and protecting and working on, right? We've got a comp plan process coming up, I recognize from having been through these several times what that feels like, ah, we need to change everything, and then everybody gets in, and you get the experts, and you get the expert attorneys, and you start talking about property law and, and having to balance all the requirements and everything, it's interesting how quickly people start to realize how magical what we've got is, so I'm looking forward to seeing everybody involved in that process, because the more people come, the more thoughtful the process is, the more buy-in it has out the other side, and that's important, it's important for a community to be together and neighborly as they're going through these processes. We can see the outcomes of not having zoning like ours all around us. When I first came down here, there was nothing on South Fulton Parkway, right? Nothing. The development pressure down here is for warehouses, right? I mean, like, it's not, it's not for what's happening in Chattahoochee Hills, our zoning has created that. So again, appreciate everybody being so engaged in protecting that and making it better, I am too, and uh, we will see you at that comp plan update. And with that, can I get a motion and a second? We're going to move out of the regular session, we're going to go to an executive session, we've got to get an update on some legal matters, we'll come back, we'll close the meeting, not really anything else going on, nobody will be offended if you leave in the meantime, thanks for coming out tonight. Can I get a motion, please, to move out of the regular session?
Make a motion to move out the regular session.
Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Diane, you got one?